Good evening and welcome to our forum for the Kansas City Council First and Second District at Large for the April 4th primary election. The forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters, Kansas City, Jackson Clay, and Platte County, and the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Social Justice Committees. I am Anita Steele and I am a member of the League. The League of Women's Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We neither support nor oppose candidates or parties. Our mission is to empower voters and to defend our democracy. We envision a democracy where every citizen has the knowledge, the right, the desire, and the confidence to participate. Our membership is open to everyone. I'd like you to know the other League members volunteering with me. Elizabeth Dar is our timekeeper and our Zoom is monitored by Terry Lane. I am head of the forum's admin committee. The public has sent in questions via the Zoom's website, L W V K C dot org. Tonight, our guest moderator is Eric Wesson, editor and publisher for the Kansas City Call. Unfortunately, we have only one candidate. I am going to let Mr. Wesson welcome folks and explain the candidates forum process. But if more than, if the other candidates do not link into the Zoom, we will allow this, the one candidate we have to introduce herself. Mr. Wesson, welcome and thank you for being here. You'll need to unmute. I don't know. I don't.
Good evening.
Yes.
Go ahead.
You're on.
Oh, I'm on. I'm trying to put out some other fires here. Thanks so much for joining us this evening. We've got a great panel of people here to discuss things. Unfortunately, only one of them is here at this present time. So we are going to engage Ms. Janaye Manley, who was running for the Second District at Large. Janaye, good evening and thanks so much for joining us.
Hi, Eric. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. And yeah, I'm just going to tell you a little bit about me and why I'm running for city council. My name is Janaye Manley and I'm running for Kansas City City Council in the Second District at Large. I grew up in the Northland of Kansas City, Missouri. My grandma's house was actually my base house and it's where I went to school from. My mom was a single mom and we jumped around a lot. We went from apartment to apartment to a one-bedroom cabin. We lived in a tent and we also lived at Rose Brooks. Finally, after she landed a union job, my grandma was able to help my mom buy a house when I was in seventh grade. At nineteen, I lost my mom and at twenty-one, I was serving tables at Applebee's, pregnant with my twins Lily and Avery. For the first five years of their lives, I struggled to make the bills. I donated plasma, I moved my abuser in, I worked overtime on the overnight shift, and none of this was enough to take care of my family. My mom taught me young that we can't make it on our own. We have to build our community. So at the right place and at the right time, I became a leader with KC Tenants, our citywide tenant union. And I realized that organizing with my community was the only way to make a better life, not just for me and my kids, but everyone we loved. And I have spent the last three years organizing with my neighbors. I stay up at night watching city council meetings and committee hearings on the city's YouTube channel to understand the decisions that are being made about my life. And what I've learned is that the people, people like you and me, must be co-governing with city council to ensure we all thrive. I love Kansas City and I am running to make sure that we have power in our city. And when I win our city, my city council race, I am committed to, yes, making sure that my lived experience leads in decision-making, but also building with real solutions, asking questions like, what has changed? Has anything changed? Is anyone missing from the conversation and is this working? My name is Janaye Manley and I'm running for Kansas City City Council and I'm excited to build a Kansas City where we all thrive. Thank you.
All right. That was a perfect two minutes. So good luck to you and your endeavor, Ms. Steele.
Yes, sir.
We have another candidate just showed up.
Mr. Younghands. I'm glad you're here. Once your audio is set up, we have started the forum and we will ask you to give your opening remarks once, ah, the little thing, so you need to unmute.
Go ahead and unmute and tell us who you are and why you are running for Second District at Large.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you, you're muted.
This is Mickey Younghands, how are you?
Great, how about you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
All right. Why are you running?
Well, I'll tell you. Some people wondered the same question, but I tell you, I, I'm a lifelong resident of Kansas City, Missouri. Been married to my beautiful wife for forty-three years. And in those years, we've had two children and I have eight grandchildren. And when I look, we're a close, very close family. And when I look at my grandchildren, all I can see and hope is that they have the opportunity that we had when we were growing up in that age. And the way I see it, I don't see them having that opportunity under the current state of the city council. So that's why I'm running. I want to try to build a better place, better community, better neighborhoods for our city that has completely failed us.
Unmute, there.
Unmute, okay. So do you want to go on with the forum with these two? Or did you?
Given Mr. Younghands' connection, I'm not sure. Elizabeth, do you have a suggestion?
Mr. Younghands, you were cutting in and out. And so let's try a few questions and see how things go.
Sure, I can always move my phone where I'm at.
Okay, if you have a better place where you get better reception, that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Eric, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, is that better?
Much better, thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome.
And if you turn it horizontal, you get a better picture of yourself. Yes.
There you go.
Now your mother will be pleased. All right, Mr. Wesson, you want to start with your second question?
Okay, well, my second question is this. Of the requirement to be a member of the city council, there are several things that you must do. But one of the most important things to do is to manage the city's multimillion-dollar budget. So my question is, what education and experience do you have in this area that could help you in this job? So we're going to start with Janaye. Janaye, what makes you qualified?
Yeah, so the city budget is actually something that we use as a public engagement process. Um, I've actually studied our city budget for the past three years because I'm an organizer. So what I do is I pay attention a lot to our city budget process. What I would like us to see is a better actively engaged budget process. Right now, our budget process actually starts in the fall and what our city manager does is he meets with every department, discusses what the budget has, what we've done with the budget, and also what they need in the next budget year. And then in about February, what happens is that budget gets proposed to the city council and becomes public. After that, we have three budget hearings where the public can get involved in the process there. What I would say we need to be doing is, what I would be doing is going to those conversations to find out how our money has been spent, what different projects have been actually allocated to. And then when we get into the public budget hearings, engaging with what has been done last year and what we need done for this year. What I would like to see the city do also is really engage the public at the beginning of that process. We see a lot of departments being built, we see a lot of like ordinances being passed, but what we don't see is the results of that. And I think that if we create a better public engagement process that starts at the beginning with evaluating what we've done in the last year, we can create a budget and ensure that that budget is actually being used most wisely. I think it all starts with public engagement and reflecting on the things we've done so that we can figure out where we need to go.
All right. Mr. Younghands, what, what experience do you bring to the table?
Okay, my background is a small businessman. I've been in the construction business for about fifty years. And in that business, there's two main things that come across my job sites almost on a daily basis. One of them is there could become problems with particular means of construction. And I have to, I have to be able to, to work with all the different trades to see that we get the problems corrected so we can move forward. But as far as the budget goes, I believe we're working on what, a $2 billion budget? My construction background again plays, plays into this. I have negotiated several, several thousand contracts in my business for the years that I've been in business. And I think I bring that expertise to the table on city council to be able to review a lot of the contracts that come, come through the city that I think need to be looked at and a little closer, if you will, and make sure that we're not spending money in a, in the wrong way, but making it work for the people. The only way that's going to work is through transparency.
Okay, so let me follow up and you have a timer there that said and you got this red box. I don't know whether it comes up on your phone, but the red box, it'll come up and it'll say stop. So I don't know if that's working on your phone or not, but here's my follow-up question with that. So do you think that currently the city's budget is being spent effectively?
I would say no.
Why not?
Well, there's several, several things and I don't have all of the specifics because I'm not on the city council. If I was, I'd surround myself and do roundtable discussions with people that have experience in whatever the issue is in the budget. I see a lot of money being spent that, again, without transparency to the people and my constituents that I'm finding are extremely concerned about the way their tax dollars are being spent. So that's where I'm at with that.
So give me an example real quick of where your constituents are concerned about how the money's being spent.
Well, one of them would, the main one right now that it's on the forefront with people, their main concern is the money that was spent for bicycle lanes in Kansas City. Not real happy, especially the small businessman that have businesses located on those thoroughfares. Not real happy. So those funds are getting awry look from the constituents.
All right, Janaye. What ways do you think about the city's budget? Is it being spent effectively? And what would you do differently?
Yeah, I mean, I think some parts of the budget are being spent effectively. One of the things that I would say is that our budget is a moral document and it is a reflection of our priorities, right? And I do think that there are times that we reflect our priorities by the policies we pass. What I would say is that the biggest thing we need to be doing is reflecting on what we've spent and if it worked. So it's not just about has the budget been spent effectively based on like what we want to get done today, but reflecting on have we actually gotten the outcomes we're looking to get, right? And if not, why not? And then going into the next budget year, how do we want to reallocate those monies to make sure that the funding is being robust, right? So it's not just about has it been spent effectively so far, but what is the outcome that we were looking for? And how was the public, how are we engaging the public, making sure that those outcomes were actually what they were expecting them to be?
Give me an example.
Um, so I can give you the example of the hotel program. In the year of 2021, I believe it was, when we spent, I think it was like $9 million to ensure that unhoused people actually had access to housing for the summer, right? What we saw was $9 million being spent there. We saw people actually get access to a roof over their heads. But what we didn't see is long-term solutions to make sure that $10 million was not just spent for the moment, but like was sustaining people, right? So when I think about the budget, the question I want to ask is like, did it work for us? And if not, how can we change that so we can do better, right? We can always learn from these mistakes and learn from the decisions we made, but really reflecting with people about what we could have done differently to make sustainable solutions.
Okay, my next question is, as an at-large candidate and as an at-large councilperson, you represent the entire city. How will you know and represent the issues of residents that are north and south of the Missouri River? Janaye, you're first.
Yeah, so I've actually been doing that. A lot of the organizing I do is focused on centering people who are most impacted. I'm a tenant organizer, I've been building relationships on, in the Northland, on the East Side, South KC. The way that I organize is finding the people who are going to be most impacted by an issue and asking them to come in with real solutions that we can build together. I actually think that that is how we like heal that divide, is recognizing that we have more in common than we do in differences. And the question is, how do we build together so that those solutions actually mirror one another? For example, I live in the southern portion of the Northland. I went on a ride with Beth in the Fifth District and what I saw were a lot of the issues that are happening in Hickman Mills and Ruskin Heights are foreshadowing to what's going to happen in my area of the Northland if we don't actually invest in one another. If we're not looking for options like Community Land Trust, if we're not looking to build robust solutions for our sidewalks, all of those things are connected, right? So there is actually a stake for all of us to know our neighbors across the city to see what they're doing really well, what we've missed, and how we can build solutions that will heal all of us. And that's the work I do.
All right. Mickey, how will you address it?
Well, it's a unique question and that's because there are different things that seem to affect different parts of the city. But when it's all said and done, six months, seven months being out there, again, speaking with my constituents, there seems to be three or four issues that are pounding them every day that they're concerned about. But it may be one through four in one part of the city and it may be two, four, three, one in another part of the city. So the priorities are different from each part of the city. But when it's all said and done, take, for example, homeless. That is an issue that all of us seem to be concerned about. The other issue is the unsightly trash in our community and in our city. People are concerned about that. And also affordable housing. I've been working with a group in the inner city, three, District Three through Five.
Okay, your, your time is up. So I'm going to ask you a follow-up question to what you're getting ready to start talking about. And this is my follow-up question. You, you mentioned the Third District. What's the difference between the Third District and the Second District as far as needs? When you're representing the entire city, you have to know what the issues are in the district. So what would you say is the big issue in the Third District?
The biggest issue that I find by working with my group KCOG in the inner city is jobs. And the main thing is transparency. The problem has been, not only now, but in the past, the, the neighbors, the people, the voters in that community don't see, they don't feel like they're getting their fair share of the jobs that are being brought in and offered to, for example, the, the multifamily, multi-residential project on truust, getting ready to move over to Prospect, the same type of project. Well, someone has come on board and said affordable housing is $1,200 a month. Well, you know and I know, I mean, that's just, that, that, that's not feasible for these folks. But yet, they don't seem to have an answer for affordable housing. So what I'm saying is, in three, they want a shot, they want the opportunity that they, that they deserve. And that's what I'm trying to do with the folks I'm involved with to see that I can service and serve the underserved. That's what we're trying to do.
Janaye, what do you think the problems are in the Second District that are different from the problems in the Third District? He said employment, what do you say?
I'd say in the Third District is access to resources and decision-making, right? So when we talk about the Third District, a lot of what has happened historically is light and demolition, right? I have an aunt who lives in a house that's over a hundred years old in the Third District and she's had like missing stairs in her house for the last fifteen years that I can remember, right? She now lives on the bottom floor and doesn't have access to a bathroom down there. And I think when we talk about access to resources and investment, what we need in the Third District is people to be empowered to make decisions around their housing, around their neighborhoods, in order to feel safe, in order to lead. Eric, I'm not sure if you're talking to me, I'm sorry. Okay, in order to lead around decisions in their neighborhoods. In the Second District, what I think one of the biggest issues are is lack of representation in recognizing us ourselves as residents of Kansas City, Missouri, and having a stake in this city, right? So a lot of the people that I talked to in the Second District actually aren't engaged in decision-making in Kansas City, mostly because there is a river divide. And the question is, how do we bring them in and recognize that we have a stake in this city? That everything that happens in Midtown and the East Side does impact the Northland. The question is, are we willing to make sure that our neighbors across the city are actually whole so that we can build for better solutions?
Okay. So the next question I have, and we'll start with you. What ideas, Janaye, what ideas can you bring to the city council on the homelessness?
Yeah, so I've actually been bringing these ideas to the city council. I think first with the Tenant's Bill of Rights, that was a huge way of investing in people in this city to make sure that we have rights in our homes and we're not just being pushed out. The other thing is right to counsel to guarantee that every tenant has the right to a lawyer if and when they are facing eviction so that we're not creating more homelessness in our city. Another idea that we should really think about is a ban on source of income discrimination to make sure that poor and working-class people have access to housing in the city. And then on a broader scale, I've been pushing for with tenants across the city, a housing trust fund that deeply invests in the people of this city to make decisions around our housing, right? When Mickey says that $1,200 a month is not affordable rents, I know that because I was a part of putting out a survey to tenants across the city asking what, how do we define affordable housing? How do we build solutions with the people in our city? Yes, with tenants, also unhoused people. The people in our city, a lot of unhoused people in our city are the roofers. They're the, they're the people who build up our housing. They're the people who work in our schools. They're the people who serve our tables. And they can and should have decision-making power in this city to make sure that we can build solutions for them. Yes, we need wraparound services, but we need housing first so that we can start to build for real, real housing and to address the root causes of what makes people unhoused.
Mickey, same question. What would you bring to the table to address the city's houseless problem situation?
Well, first of all, and I alluded to it earlier, is I'm, I'm a solution guy and I don't claim to know, know all be all, but I have been successful under, in my construction background and management with providing solutions to the problems. And that is, you have to surround yourself with people that live through this on a daily basis, whether it's different types of doctors, whether it's mental doctors, people that can, can work with the homeless people. Because if it's a medical issue, they need attention. And I'm not, I, I would say that they're not currently getting that type of attention for, for, for maybe they don't feel comfortable bringing, coming forward. Maybe it's a trust factor. But again, they need to feel comfortable in what they're doing. And another thing that's, that's kind of working its way into it is we don't have, we're not, we're not enforcing our laws in the city. We still have people begging for money on, on the corners in intersections around the city. People are extremely upset about it. Accidents have happened. We had a police officer and his canine passed away about three weeks ago for this. So we, we need to enforce laws as we have it and, and we need to prosecute. And maybe that'll push them away from thinking they need to make a, a living on the street corner. And let me add this. I mean, there are so many jobs, so many jobs out there available.
Mr. Younghands, I'm going to ask you to stop and I'm going to ask Terry to help Mr. Wesson with his microphone, which apparently is having an issue. Thank you for your pantomime, Mr. Wesson, it was very good.
You did a good job.
I'm going to stop that.
Mr. Wesson, will you unmute?
I think he was trying to.
Oh, that's what I was trying to do.
There you are. I think that sound is back. Great.
Okay, so can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you much better now.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm sorry, but I was trying to do the time thing. Okay, so one of the things that I've heard both of you talk about when we talk about the issues that are Third District, Fifth District, and whatever, I didn't hear either one of you mention crime. And I work in the Third District, I'm there for all day, every day. So one of the things that I hear about more often than not is crime. So the murder rate this year is higher than it was last year and on course to tie the record or break the record from the previous year where we had a, a record-breaking year. So my question to you is this. What is keeping us from getting our crime rate under control? So I'm going to start with Mickey. You get to start this question off.
Okay, thank you. What I'm hearing, uh, from, again, from the constituency, in, especially in the, uh, inner city. And I, I, I wanna add this, I've been to several neighborhood, uh, functions to meet the, the neighbors in the area. And there have been a lot of our police officers present. And there seems to be a good relationship that's working. And they are trying to, uh, curb the drugs and the guns and the murders. Uh, they're, they're, they're working tirelessly to achieve this. Now, I would say, first of all, again, we are understaffed by boots on the ground. It's my understanding with the information that I've gathered, there's about eleven hundred, uh, boots on the ground. We're supposed to have about fifteen hundred. So we're shy four hundred. So we're not able to be visible on the streets as we were in the past. And that's a problem. A lot of the crime, uh, happens because they know the turnaround time and the response time is terrible. It's just not happening. That, and once we, they do commit a crime, they need to be prosecuted. And we're not getting the prosecution out of the prosecutor's office in Kansas City, Missouri. It's not happening.
All right, thank you. So Janay, what do you think the issue is with violent crime in the community?
Yeah, so when we talk about, uh, crime, we actually need to be talking about the root cause of crime. And what we know is that the root cause of crime is actually access, lack of access to the resources that we need in order to make sure that we all thrive. That's actually what I was talking about earlier. We should in fact be funding proactive solutions to ensure that people in our city have, have the resources we need. Right? So to me, the way that we reduce crime is yes, investing in housing, investing in mental health and physical healthcare to ensure that people have access to what they need when things get tough. It's investing in public education to make sure that our youth, our kids, have access to an education system that gives them hope, that lets them know that we can and should be able to make it in a city like Kansas City. When we want to address the root causes of crime, we actually need to be asking ourselves questions as to why are people producing harm, recreating harm? And how do we get to those solutions? How do we create, create structures that hold our people, build out our communities and make sure our neighbors know each other so that we can feel safe? And so that if and when something does happen in our neighborhood, we can look to our neighbors for the support that we need. Because the reality is, is those people who are closest to you in that moment are the people who are gonna show up, show up for you when things are hard, when you need, uh, resources or support. And that's, to me, the root cause of crime is lack of resources. And if we are not addressing that, the crime rates will continue to go up because we're not actually addressing the problems.
So, okay, I wanna kinda dig, dig a little bit de- deeper because you all gave good answers, but they were surface answers. So to you, the root causes of crime are education, housing, and what else did you say?
Lack of healthcare, public transportation.
So Mickey, what are your root causes of crime?
Well, I, 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 I think I identified, uh, uh, what I'm hearing from the people is more visibility with our, 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 our police force.
Okay, so more visibility with police officers.
Right.
So, okay, so you would be supportive of more police officers?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So how would you go about that? Janay, do you believe in more police officers?
I'm sorry, the question again?
Janay, do you believe in more police officers?
So actually, Kansas City, Missouri doesn't get to make a decision about how many police we put in service, right? We are fully funding our police department right now because there's state control of our police department. We don't get to make decisions about how many police officers are, uh, patrolling. I think Kansas City, Missouri, the can't, the city council in Kansas City should be prioritizing figuring out solutions that we can make decisions around. And the root cause of crime is poverty. And if we are investing in solutions to those problems, we can actually address the issues. Um, and that is especially until we get local control of Kansas City Police Department.
Okay, so do you, uh, Mickey, do you believe in local control of the police department? Or do you like the way it is?
I like the way it is.
So you like state control?
I do.
Okay, so as a city council person, one way or another, at some point in time, you have to fall on one side of the fence, either pro or against. So you're saying keep it like it is, why?
Well, I'm saying keep it like it is because, uh, 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 again, not being in, uh, the city council and not having, uh, not having, uh, uh, information, uh, that's, that's privy to me uh, out here as a candidate. Uh, I mean, I, I can only say this, that I believe, I believe that the people that are on the commission for the state are local people of Kansas City, Missouri. So by going to, uh, uh, to city control, we're gonna be doing the same thing. They're gonna be appointed people from Kansas City, Missouri. However, however, there will be, um, man, there'll be, uh, city council and city manager involved, those kinda things. Uh, uh, that, that, that's what I'm unsure of and how the mechanics of all that would work. Uh, so, but, but when it's all said and done, we're still, we still have, whether it's state or city, we still have local people of Kansas City sitting in those panels.
Okay, Janay, do you think conflict resolution programs work to help curb violence in our community? Or do you even think conflict is an issue?
Uh, yeah, I think conflict is an issue. Do I think conflict resolution works? I think it does, but I think that as a city, we actually have to create a culture of getting to know our neighbors and building out solutions in the community, right? So it's not just what conflict has arisen, but how are we learning how to build with each other? Again, it goes back to that stake, right? To recognize that this city, like we live here, and it is too important for us to like just walk away from any issue, right? When we start creating a culture like that, then we can start talking about conflict resolution. What we don't wanna be doing is reacting to conflict. Instead, we should be proactively saying, these, this is your neighbor, right? Like, I was talking to a homeowner the other day who said, I live in this neighborhood and I've lived in my neighborhood since nineteen ninety-seven. I have to know my neighbors because I'm not moving, right? So when we talk about the stake of knowing your neighbors, the stake of recognizing that the person that you got into an argument with last week is gonna be your neighbor for the next twenty years, how do we create solutions for that? Right? And that is a culture that we can create. We can create conversations with one another where we do not agree. But what we can do is recognize that everyone in Kansas City is in fact here because this is, this is where we live. And without dismissing one another, build out for conflict resolution. I think it is a culture, it's not a reactive solution, but instead a proactive solution where we are modeling those conversations every day together. And that's how we get to a place where conflict resolution is not a reaction, but the way of life.
Okay, Mickey, this question is right up your alley.
Uh-oh.
What is the biggest threat facing small businesses in Kansas City? And what will you do to strengthen our city's small business community?
Oh, wow, that's a good one. Uh, I think, I, I think we need, uh, the main thing in talking with small business owners, uh, again, i- it appears to, to the small business owners that, that I spoke with, they feel like the city's trying to put them out of business instead of keeping them in business. Uh, and I hit on that a while ago on the bicycle track, uh, uh, lanes. And it was just, I mean, I, I talked to a fella just yesterday on Truman Road. He said, Mickey, I've got people that watch here every day. And he said, I've had one bicycle person here in the last two and a half weeks, and they were on the sidewalk. So all that money being spent, uh, uh, for the bicycle pass, I think, was, was at, at, at best. I mean, it was a, a waste of money. But basically what I'm saying in regards to the small business, they need, they need support from the city. They need the city to do what they're supposed to do. Maybe try cleaning up the streets better. Try cleaning up the sewers and the gutters that are, uh, that have not been, uh, uh, attended to, no maintenance. Yeah, try working on the sidewalks so, so, uh, uh, people, uh, patrons and customers and/or clients don't trip over, uh, broken concrete, uh, uh, because of subsurfaces. I mean,
All right, thank you. Janay? Janay, what's the biggest threat facing small businesses in Kansas City?
I mean, I think our biggest threat is the fact that our city is not investing in small businesses in the way that we could, right? So right now, our city gets out a lot of tax incentives. If we are going to give tax incentives, it should be because that we have small locally-owned businesses who actually need support in our city. The other thing I would be really excited for our city to do is support policy that would encourage small locally-owned businesses to rent spaces out in city-owned properties. That would ensure that this, that local businesses actually have stability in our communities. And as they get on their feet, are able to make sure that their bills are paid, right? Um, I would also be really interested in looking into co-op workplace models. What that means is the people who are working within the businesses actually have a stake in the business to make sure that it thrives. And I think that our city can and should be building out these types of tools with small businesses and people in our city who don't necessarily have access to capital today. But if we pulled our resources together, we could make that happen.
Okay, so, uh, Mickey, do you think conflict resolution works? And when you get on the city council, do you believe that you could come up with some conflict resolution programs to help reduce violent crime?
Uh, I would say yes to that. And, uh, my approach, uh, again, would be to surround, uh, uh, do roundtable discussions for people that, that have the background and experience with, with those type of needs. Uh, a- and I keep referring to roundtable because you mentioned just then, programs. That is one of the biggest problems this city has to this day, is programs. They got a program for this, they got, well, let's get a program for that. LA's using this, so we need to use that program. Or, uh, St. Louis is doing, too many programs. A lot of corruption going on in this town, in, in this city. And it needs to stop. And the people need to know what's happening in their city. And the first place that's gonna start is with an audit, not a city audit, but a state audit to find out where their tax dollars are really going, cuz they're not happy.
All right, so I wanna back up to Janay and ask the question to you. Uh, you just mentioned in small businesses, people renting office space from the city's properties. So explain how that would look. Because a lot of the city's properties are blighted.
Yeah, so I think the organization is called, I think maybe WeCode, but they also rent out a city property in Kansas City, right? And to your point that the city's, uh, properties are blighted, if we are deciding that that is a place that small businesses can and should go, then we should be investing in fixing up those buildings. In fact, we should be investing in like not having blighted buildings. I don't think that we should just sit on blighted buildings. Instead, we should be investing in them and utilizing them for community spaces, right? Another example of how this could work is like, honestly, there are a whole bunch of KCPS schools that are empty right now that the city could invest in, decide that we actually want to be a part of making those schools become community hugs, hubs where people in our neighborhoods can put their locally-owned businesses into. I think when we start thinking creatively about how we can support locally-owned businesses, we can find those types of solutions that invest in the people here. It is going to take money, but it's also worth it because it is the people in our communities that make Kansas City strong and an exciting place to live.
Okay, this is a yes or no answer for both of you. Mickey, you go first. Are you in favor of a downtown ballpark?
That's a loaded question.
Yes or no, are you in favor of a downtown ballpark?
I am in favor of a downtown ballpark if it's financed correctly and not from the people.
Janay, yes or no, are you in favor of a downtown ballpark?
No. Do you want me to keep going?
No, okay, uh, if the Royals were successfully to build a downtown bar- ballpark, the values of the homes near, nearby will increase. What do you suggest to reduce the impact of increased property taxes on long-time residents? Janay, you can go. You said no, you wouldn't support it.
Yeah, the value of the homes will increase, and so will the rents for the tenants who live in apartments in the area. So what I would suggest is the citywide community land trust is something that we passed actually in the fall. And I would suggest that we start putting properties into the citywide community land trust to help stabilize the properties that are there, especially when we think about who's buying up properties in Kansas City. Most of the time, who's buying up properties are out-of-state speculators who are wait, waiting for the prices of the housing to go up. If we are actively making sure that those prop, uh, properties get stabilized through a citywide community land trust, what we don't have to worry about is poor and working-class people, people who are living on fixed incomes, getting displaced from their properties. The other thing I would suggest is that we use that people's housing, or the housing trust fund, the city housing trust fund, to ensure that rents are stabilized for the tenants that live in those areas. When we talk about where has disinvestment happened, historically, it's on the east side. It's right next to where that downtown stadium is planning on going. What we don't wanna do is see that area get investment, but not investment for the people who already live there. So if there were to be a downtown stadium, we need to make sure that we are creating uh, solutions that are led by the people who live in those communities to make sure that their housing is stabilized and that they get to make decisions about how long they live in their communities, what is happening in their communities, and that they can afford it, right? So those are the types of solutions that I believe we should have. If a downtown stadium were to happen, those are the types of things that I would champion to make sure that our people were not harmed while that was happening.
So Mickey, you said yes, you would support it. So if the Roy, if it was funded correctly, so if the Royals are successful in building a downtown ballpark, the values of the homes nearby will increase. What do you suggest to reduce the impact of increased property taxes on long-time residents?
Well, I think anytime, uh, you have a situation like this, it presents itself, uh, you, you could, you could have, uh, people out of the city, out of the state, coming in, uh, uh, to invest. So I would think that anybody doing speculative, uh, ownership in, uh, in and around the, the new stadium, uh, would be building in, uh, uh, and allowing, uh, for those tax increases. I don't, I, 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 I think we should create a good mix in, in the neighborhoods where it's not half a million-dollar housing and a hundred and fifty thousand-dollar housing. I believe that with the right people involved that wanna get out and work with the people and see this growth in our community, I believe that we could combine the efforts where, whether you've got a half-million-dollar home or a hundred thousand dollars, we can make that work in a given area.
Okay, so my next question is dealing with ranked choice voting. And that has been the single most popular issue on, in the questions of the league of women voters they have solicited from the public. Now, here's the thing. In ranked choice voting, voters are asked to list their preferred candidates in order. When the votes are tallied, the votes of the least popular candidates are redistributed until one candidate has fifty percent of the vote, resulting in an automatic runoff election without the expense or effort of holding a second election. What is your position on ranked choice voting for municipal elections? And Mickey, we're gonna start with you.
Well, I I I'll be real honest with you. Uh, I have heard uh uh very little about this topic until the last two weeks. Uh, and I've been spending a lot of my time campaigning and uh haven't had a whole lot of time to look into it. But in talking with some of the other candidates, uh uh with the information that I have now, I'm not a fan of that. It doesn't mean that that will be the end all be all. Uh, but until I can accumulate uh the information from people that I trust, then I'm just gonna uh I'm gonna say, hey, I need more information.
Okay, Janay.
Yeah, so the first time I had actually heard about ranked choice voting was on a national level. I actually didn't know that it was a possibility on the local tel- level until I met a woman named Victoria who's been passing outlet at every forum that I've been at. And my brother was the first person who introduced me to ranked choice voting. I honestly like the idea of ranked choice voting. And I like the idea of ranked choice voting because it allows people to get engaged in the process and learn more dynamically about the candidates who are running, right? A lot of people who don't vote, a lot of the reason why they don't is because they assume that if their candidate is not the candidate who would get the most votes, that they would be wasting a vote, right? So for allow allowing people the space to like say, this is the person that meet that like meets my values the most, but also I would be fine with this person or this person is really important. It is allowing people to vote govern with us, allowing us to recognize that we can fight for our biggest dreams and also recognize that those things might not happen at the beginning, right? So ranked choice voting is something that I am in support of. The other thing that I would say is that currently, a lot of people don't know about the April fourth election. We've been working really hard to make sure that people do know to vote on April fourth. But right after that election, we have to go back to work to let people know to vote again on June twentieth. And I think that that also just demoralizes people when they have to take off work twice, when they have to find babysitters twice in order to go out and vote when they've already wanted, they've already tried to make their voices heard. So my question, or so I am in support of it because I believe that we should prioritize making voting as accessible as possible to the people in our city.
All right. So the next question is about TIFs. What guidelines would you adhere to in making TIF decisions? Janay.
Yeah, so TIFs. I would start by saying that we already have an advanced Casey uh board that is was actively working on redeveloping the TIF process. And I think we should bring that board back. I think we should actually come to that conversation, finding out what the advanced Casey scoreboard scoreboard was discussing and bring that conversation closer to the public with a robust public engagement process. I would love to see if and when we decide what our TIFs look like, that the school districts are actually a part of those conversations, that our libraries are part of the conversations about how would we, how would they be impacted by the tips that we give out? How much money are we giving out in TIFs? How that impacts them and is it worth it based on what we are getting out of it, right? I don't believe public dollars should be spent without public goods actually being shown, right? So that looks like engaging the public schools, it looks like engaging the public library. It also looks like engaging the actual public and telling people here's how much uh resources we would be getting out of this type of project. And this is what it's gonna cost us for X amount of years. Not just percentage, but like actual money, actual books, right? Actual access to libraries, this is what it will cost us. Is it worth the cost? If the community is saying yes, if the school districts are saying yes, if the public libraries are saying this is worth it, then let's have that type of conversation. But I think we should prioritize that by telling people what is the dollar amount cost that we are taking away from our community? And what is the actual gain that we are bringing to the community? And that's how we could get to a place where our tips are actually working for people.
The school district has a representative on the TIF board.
Yes, the school district has one representative on the TIF board. And a lot of times, those TIFs are not going to projects that are creating truly affordable housing. And what we don't have on those boards are people like tenants in our neighborhoods. I think we should be having a deeper conversation around how do we prioritize the voices of the people who are getting their resources taken away from them, right? So not just a seat in on that board, but also like a conversation with the school board, making sure that the resources that are being taken away from the community are not creating more harm than what we are actually reinvesting in the community.
So Mickey, what would you do about the TIF decisions? What guidelines would you adhere to in making TIF decisions?
Well, again, uh, again, I referred to it a while ago, uh, but it it appears that it appears that the city council folks that we have in the seats right now uh are not doing their job. And what I mean by that is every once in a while, you gotta get out to the public, more than every once in a while. You gotta have big ears. You gotta listen, 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 speak later, gather your information, and then go with it. Be transparent with the people. And don't uh don't make it appear that we're we're trying to hide something by uh uh allowing a TIF go to an outside uh uh outside of the state, uh a developer or investor of some kind. We need to, we need to know more about the people that are taking advantage of this tax increment financing. We got to know, and I don't think, I don't think they've been running hurt on it the way they should. And I think it 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 deserves much more attention instead of just giveaways.
So let me ask you this. How are you gonna make neighborhoods stronger? You know, the first thing you hear from neighborhood associations is that they need more money, they got payback money. But it seems like the city's focus is a lot of times on building uh shiny new buildings downtown that in three years are gonna be empty because the people move out. So what are you gonna do to make neighborhoods stronger? Let's go with Mickey first.
Okay, what you're gonna do uh i- is you're gonna engage. First of all, we need to have the people voted in to city council on four four that are people that are like minded, and we have those. We have those right now that are on the ballot. We can turn things around in the city and start th- making things happen and bring our city, our community and neighborhoods back to where they need to be. And what I mean by that is need to be is that people working together and accomplishing the things so they know when it's all said and done. And they turn the light out on the day that they did something with their neighbor or a across the neighborhood neighbor to create a better city, a better neighborhood, and a better community for our children to grow up in. So i- it we gotta work at it together. We can't take a uh uh an extended arm away from it. We've got to become engaged.
Janay, make the neighborhood stronger. You gonna do that?
Yeah, so a few things. I want to start with, I was actually knocking doors this weekend in the fifth district in Ruskin Heights, and I met a neighbor named Cedric. And he's lived in his house again since nineteen ninety seven. And what he said is he moved into his house and the neighborhood was really strong, it was really powerful. In fact, he knew every single neighbor on the block and he told me why every single one of them moved out. What he said was the whole block is now tenant, right? And because people are moving in and out of the neighborhood, he's not getting to know his neighbors. Every year, someone new moves in, right? So I actually think stabilizing neighborhoods and ensuring that people have a stake in their community allows for neighborhoods to become stronger. The other thing I would say is yes, we need a neighborhood associations. We also need to build up the relationship between neighbors and tenants who live in our city, right? I live in a neighborhood. In fact, the first time I went to my neighborhood association meeting was because a development was happening in my neighborhood. And the neighbors thought it got shut down in city planning. So I went to the neighborhood association meeting and told them that city planning actually recommended it to council, do not recommend, right? But that does not mean that it's no longer an ordinance, right? It was going to city council and they needed to show up to city council to make sure that their voices were heard. So, and I know all of these things because these things impact my life because I've been organizing as a tenant. And I recognize that the neighborhood association is a part of my community and I have a role in making sure that people have access to these resources. So when we talk about how we, how do we make the neighborhood stronger? Care- Kansas City is forty eight percent tenant. How are we as tenants and homeowners building a Kansas City together with real solutions and helping each other navigate these systems?
Does Kansas City have a transportation problem, Janay?
Yes, it does. Got right back in here. Um, we do have a public transportation problem. Right now, we have pu- free public transportation, which is great. But that public transportation needs to be reliable, right? I currently live in a neighborhood that does not have access to a bus that comes consistently. And I know that that is an issue all across this city, right? We tout the streetcar and the streetcar is great for the people who live in midtown, who live near Crown Center. But what we need is connectivity to make sure that people can get to and from. So I've actually run through four cars in the last eighteen months. And I'm borrowing my brother's car because I can't afford to buy another one, right? I don't want a car. What we really need is a robust public transportation that will get you north and south, east to west, west to east, that makes sure that our neighbors can actually get to one another. And we need our buses when they say they're coming to actually show up. So when we talk about the public transportation, yes, we need free public transportation. But we need to make sure that that public transportation is reliable to get us to our jobs, our childcare, our uh places that we buy our groceries and our community spaces that make Kansas City an exciting place to live.
Mickey, do we have good public transportation?
No. No, it's terrible. But uh it kind of tagged on what uh Janay was saying. It, and it goes back to what I was saying earlier. I hate to keep referring back to earlier, but we've covered it. And that is this, the people of of the city council in Kansas City as we know it today, they just seem to fall short of of whatever program or or whatever they're doing. It just seems to have issues. They're bringing on different types of transportation. And as Janay said, you know, she has problems in a certain area with not getting the bus and everything. It's not just her area, it's several areas around town. This comes back to having a good round table information with people that know what they're talking about. And you do it with a feasibility study before you go out and throw dollars at it and realize it doesn't work. I E. Problems we're having with this beautiful airport that we're having today.
My next question is this. This is something near and dear to my heart. Potholes. Every time they wanna pass a tax in Kansas City, the first thing they say, there are two things they're gonna say, is when you pass this tax, it's gonna create jobs. The second thing that they say is it's gonna fix the streets. I've been at the call for twenty one years and every single tax says they're gonna fix the street, but we still got the same problems. What's your formula for fixing the streets in Kansas City? Mickey, we're gonna start with you.
All right. My formula would be to send the incumbents out the door on four four. Please, I mean, how could you stand up in front of people in forums in neighbor that are crying for you to hear them and ask to be voted in when you can take a look around what's happened in the last four years is worse than what it was when they were voted in? So why are they asking for more years? Come on, hey, listen, common sense, not nonsense. That's the way I feel about. And I know why we have those problems. A lot of it is management, a lot of it. They don't even have any idea how bad it is out here. And the infrastructure, what's going on underneath that promotes these potholes.
Janay, are you gonna fix these potholes?
Like, so Mickey was actually at my neighborhood association, I believe, last week because people were upset about potholes. Um, yeah, I mean, I think we've doubled the amount of money that we are putting towards road maintenance. What I want to see us do is instead of just fixing a pothole here and there, actually resurfacing entire streets to make sure that we are creating streets that are sustainable. A lot of our roads are old and we keep patching them up. And that's not a sustainable way to actually solve for the problem, right? We see the same potholes coming back every year. And it's because, yes, we have extreme weather in Kansas City, but also because the roads are not built, right? They're old, they're older roads. So what I want to see us do is invest those dollars that we've just doubled, right? Like, I just read an article that we went from twenty million to forty million dollars in road infrastructure. So what we could be doing is actually repaving the entire road instead of just doing little potholes here and there, recognizing that roads that have frequent issues should be pulled up and actually redone. And I want to see us do that in neighborhoods that need it the most. When we talk about public transportation, where do we need our buses? Where do we need people to have access to transportation? How are we addressing these artic- uh artery roll roads to make sure that people can get to where they need to go without destroying their cars? I told you, I've gone through four cars in eighteen months. And if we are investing in the people, if we are investing in the infrastructure of this city, if we're doubling that investment, let's make sure we're doubling it, not to just patch holes, but to actually fix the roads.
Okay, so uh this is another one of the things that uh it's been a real pet peeve of mine as well. So several proponents of a downtown are currently boasting a park to cover part of six seventy in the South Loop at a cost of two hundred million dollars. This is not a city project, but as a camp council person, would you support this effort? Janay, are you gonna support the park over the highway?
No, that's not my priority. My priority are the poor and working la- class people of this city and making sure that they have access to the things that we need. I don't think that the downtown park is necessarily a bad thing, but it's not the priority that I need to be paying attention to. If that's what developers want to build for downtown, cool. We've spent a lot of public dollars on downtown and we need to make sure that our eyes are looking towards the, again, the communities that have been most like disinvested from. And when we talk about ensuring that that happens, when we talk about community spaces, when we talk about public safety, what that looks like is knowing one another, what that looks like is building out those community uh spaces so that kids can play, so that we can have barbecues together. And I think that that looks like not just looking to downtown to be beautiful, but so that our neighborhoods are beautiful, so that our neighborhoods are bright thriving, so that when kids are walking home from school, they can stop at the swing set and hang with their friends, right? So those are the things that I want to prioritize. I am not interested in talking about a downtown park, a downtown ballpark. What I'm interested in talking about is the people who live in our communities who are struggling to make the bills and how do we make their lives better every single day?
So Mickey, are you and your wife of forty something years gonna be walking through that park over six seventy or are you going to be uh uh kind of leading your council to do something different?
Well, Eric, I'm gonna be leading our council to do something different. And uh there are so many things, I don't know how much longer this uh is gonna last, this uh interview we're doing here. But we could talk for days on all of the things that are on the forefront to our, to our uh uh to our uh uh city people and our voters. And what needs to happen is we do a shake and bake deal. We put it and we've got to make the priority items come through down the shaft and here's what lays. And we've got to address those priorities first before we start investing in these wild, wild covered parks. I'm wondering if that idea came from, was that a San Francisco idea maybe or a a another knee jerk reaction from our existing city council as it is today? It's crazy.
From, it came from Dallas. It came from, it came from Dallas. We got two more questions left here. So my next question is this, and then we're gonna have a wrap up question. You all are gonna be doing your closing remarks and y'all have, we have gone through the whole list of questions and you've done an outstanding job. So here's my next question here. What should the plan be for transporting thousands of visitors to Arrowhead Stadium and all over the city during the Soccer World Cup in twenty twenty six? Janay?
I think that plan starts with having a plan for the people who live in Kansas City today. We have three years until the World Cup comes. And what we should be doing is creating a robust public transportation people, uh transportation system that works for the people of Kansas City who live here every single day. When we start creating solutions like that, the other things that we bring in, the other ways that we welcome people in our community becomes very natural, right? Let's make sure that people can get to childcare facilities, that people can get to the grocery store, that people can get to their community hubs and start building out a public transportation system for that. We have three years before the World Cup comes to Kansas City. We can and should create a robust public transportation system for the people who live here so that when the World Cup comes here, it's not disrupting our everyday lives. And once we get there, once we get to a place where we can reliably have public transportation for the people who live here, we can start to build for solutions for things like the Ro- uh World Cup. We've actually seen our city very rapidly celebrate things, right? Like the Chiefs Parade that happened. I was amazed by how easily uh we had access to our roads and our highways, this second Chiefs Parade. And it was because we had learned from the mistakes of the parade before. But if we are creating solutions today for the people who live here, then when the World Cup comes, we can create creative solutions for the World Cup. But first, we have to make sure that people who live here can get to and from the places they need to go to continue to make this this city run, this city thrive, and then we can talk about the World Cup.
Okay, you know what I was more stump dumbfounded about was how they found a million dollars all of a sudden to fund the parade. Anyway, I'm sorry, I digressed. That's bad host moderator. Mickey, what are you gonna do to make sure that thousands of visitors, the World Cup is gonna be here? People are gonna be at the hotels downtown. They're gonna be at the hotels in Overland Park. Well, how are you planning on getting these people to the World Cup at Arrowhead Stadium?
Well, first of all, we need to have the ability to uh uh to observe the need, okay? Once we have like minded individuals at at in the city council that realize that this is, this is coming sooner than later, then we'll be able to take and do the studies, as you said, Eric. Overland Park Hotels, uh downtown hotels. There's feasibility studies that could be done on 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 those uh thoroughfares and those uh uh ways to get to and from the different uh venues that are out there that we're gonna make available to the athletes. So I think, I think you're right. Once we identify those, then you're gonna see how much you really need. So you don't get caught short, then you've got to go outside and start bringing in uh uh vehicles that are uh conducive to transportation like that, but hiring drivers that are local, local drivers to give them the opportunity to share in the monetary of it, of the event.
Mickey, what question do you wish I had asked you and how would you have answered it?
Oh gosh, can you give me, can you give that to Janay first?
Uh, Janay, he, he passed the baton. What question do you wish I had asked you and how would you have answered it?
Yeah, um, so I think the question that I wish you would have asked me is what does it mean to center the most impacted people? I've actually said it a lot on this call and I think that it's really important that I give an example of that. So what I mean by centering the most impacted people is bringing them into the conversation to make decisions about their lives. And I'm gonna give you an example of how that's happened, how I've seen it happen. So in two thousand nineteen, while I was a leader with KC tenants, what I was doing, what we were fighting for was a tenant's bill of rights. One of the things that brought me into KC tenants was the ban on source of income discrimination. I was a single mom on section eight housing and that actually got crossed out, right? So what we, what the organizers there did was they asked every single person in the room who who was living on a voucher or on social security to raise their hand. And they wanted to hear from us or from us first, right? That did not mean that the solution was coming. That did not mean we were making a decision, but they wanted to make sure that our voices were heard in that conversation and how it would impact us. And because of things like that, it was me, there was James, there was Gillespie, who all made the decision that the tenant's bill of rights was actually too important for us to cut, for us to walk away from. And even though that the ban of source of income discrimination was not in the tenant's bill of rights, we knew that tenants would have better protections because of a tenant's bill of rights, and that was worth fighting for. And because the voices of those impacted were centered and were leading the conversation, people like me, people like James are still in deep relationship with KC tenants, fighting for different policies, right? And that's what it means to center the most impacted people. It does not mean that we will get every single win. What it does mean is that people are leading the way on the decisions that are impacting their lives.
Mickey, what question do you wish I had asked and how would you have answered it?
Well, Eric, I uh in closing here, I always yield to the lady. That's the way I was brought up, so that's why I gave that to her first. But the question you did not ask was future development in Kansas City, Missouri. I did my own survey. Uh lasted about three months uh a few months ago, uh in particularly in the Northland because the availability of acreage and acreage and acreage of ground. And I talked to developers and builders and the uh uh the subcontractors involved in building the roads in those communities. And it was like a recorder hitting replay, rewind, hit play, rewind, play. They all said the same thing. They are having nothing but problems with with city council in getting uh new developments off the ground. If you have a forty acre track and you want to develop it and you get all the people involved that you need, surveyors, what have you, and you get it wet stamped from the engineers, you take it to the city, Kansas City, Missouri, takes them two years to turn around a permit for those developers to develop that subdivision. You can go to Liberty and have it in six months. So there's an issue between the developer builder and the personnel that sit on the city council in Kansas City, Missouri. And it needs to be corrected for us to turn on any more development.
Janay, do you think Eighteenth and Vine Jazz District has been properly developed? And what would you do to help get it developed?
No, I don't think it has been property to properly developed. In fact, I think a lot of the
Okay, what do you think needs to be a development there?
Yeah, I mean, I think the first part of that conversation is about bringing people who are in Eighteenth and Vine to the table, right? You own the Kansas City Call and I've heard you on the Weekend Review saying that you guys need funding, right? When we talk about how do we fund, how do we fund things in the Eighteenth and Vine area? Yes, it is about the businesses. It is also about the people who live in that community. It is about the residents of Parade Park making decisions around what they want to see in Eighteenth and Vine, right? So how do we develop it? We start with a very honest conversation about what has been done, what has been promised and what hasn't happened yet and why it hasn't happened. And then we start talking to people about what we want to see done and what are the accountability measures to make sure that that is happening? How are we following up with one another? How are we keeping track of the money that is being spent? And is the, are those developments actually happening? Um, I want to see Eighteenth and Vine be the place that we see when we see big press conferences or big news stories about our jazz district. I want it to be a place that people are excited to come to, but I want it to be a place where the residents actually feel at home and excited to stay in.
Uh Mickey, what do you think about Eighteenth and Vine?
I think the original concept was fabulous.
What was the original concept?
Me being a musician since I was thirteen years old, a front singer here in greater Kansas City area. I sang a lot down in the neighborhoods. And the music was was the motor to make that happen. And so what's happened is they have thrown money, good money after good money after good money. Again, they failed to get a good feasibility study and plug in the people of the area. They never felt part of the promotions and or businesses that went in there. So if they don't feel a part of it, I'm not so sure that they're gonna uh that they're gonna back it and and be there uh to support the different businesses that go in there. Again, I think it's a great idea. I want to see it because it's part of our heritage. And I love the area. It's just the funds, again, misused. Gotta look at where the money's going.
Last question, two, you have two minutes for your closing remarks. You got two minutes to convince me and our audience to vote for you. Mickey, you get to go first.
Okay, uh again, my background uh lifelong uh in Kansas City, Missouri, lived there all my life. Uh married forty three years, eight grandchildren. I'm a family man. I'm a family guy. And I support family in our city. And to get there, there needs to be a lot of changes in our city. And to do that, we need to vote for four for the people that are gonna do that, for the people that are crying for a community they want to be proud of, that they were proud of at one time. They could go to the plaza and see a police officer riding on a horse or sitting by the fountain, talking to young children as they threw coins and what have you into the fountain. We've gotta get back to the basics of what good people are all about. They're starving. We need to feed them with a city that's gonna grow and continue to grow as five star city that it is.
All right. Janay, got two minutes. Convince me to vote for you.
My name is Janay Manley and I'm running for Kansas City City Council in the second district at large. I am a mother of nine year old twins, Lily and Avery, and I am fighting for a Kansas City where they can thrive. I am here for them and for all of us. My life in Kansas City has been all about survival. Among many jobs I have had to pay the bills, I was formerly a server at Applebee's. I worked in banking. I was an overnight manager at QuickTrip. And no matter how many hours were on my time card or how many tips I made, I struggled to make ends meet. I find myself needing to donate plasma to pay the bills. And I barely kept myself alive by eating one meal a deal a day because my job at Applebee's provided me a half price meal. When I couldn't afford my rent, I had to move my abuser back in. And I've had family members stay with me because of eviction, bad credit, utility bills that they've had to pay off. What I'm saying is that no matter how hard we work or deeply sacrifice, porn, we working class people cannot thrive if they are not making decisions that prioritize our needs. It can feel inevitable that this kind of suffering continues in the city that we love, but it's not inevitable. Not if we organize and not if we elect representatives who will prioritize people over profit. Not if a regular person actually has a seat at the table when decisions are deeply affecting the la- our lives and how they are made. This is how we move away from sur- surviving and into thriving. My name is Janay Manley and I'm running for Kansas City City Council in the second district at large, and I intend to win. When I do, I am deeply committed to practicing co-governance and I will, I envision and build and implement and sustain alongside my community. I will only ever be accountable to the people of Kansas City. I am unbot. I am the only candidate in my race who is declining donations from corporations, for-profit developers, private utility companies, or anyone else that would ask me to compromise my values of people over profit. I believe in Kansas City and I know that we will win.
All right, to vote for you. All right, I did a great job to the League of Women Voters and Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. I am humbled and honored to have been uh asked to moderate this event. Uh Janay, Mickey, I wish you both luck uh coming into the April fourth primary. And I am going to turn this evening over to uh Ms. Steel.
Good job, Eric.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good.
Thank y'all.
Good evening and thank you both, all three of you, very, very much for being here at our forum. Thank you, audience, for your thought provoking questions. Please take the time to share these forums with your friends and neighbors and on your social network. They are available on YouTube through the League's website, L W V K C dot org. Also, when you're looking for voter information, check out Vote Four One One. It has the candidates and the issues that you will be voting on when you go in there and and just put in your address and you'll be able to link to these candidate forums. Uh remember, you will be voting for seven city council candidate. All six at large and for the district that you live in. Thank you very much for joining us tonight and good night. I think you can hit leave now, Mr. Young Hands.
I can leave now?
You can leave now. Thank you for being here.